All right, well, let's go ahead and follow up on this meeting. Uh, of the City Council Committee on Council Processes for Monday, July fourteenth, twenty twenty five. Um, we have all four committee members here. Um, you know, just wanna say who you are.
Matt Flaherty, Councilmember at large.
Ms. Zulik, Bloomington City Council District six.
Courtney Daly, Bloomington City Council District five.
And I'm Isabel Pymon Smith, District one. And we have from the clerk's office, you wanna say who you are, you're present today?
Yeah, okay, Nicole Bolden, City Clerk.
Senator Crossley, Deputy Clerk for Communications and Outreach.
And then from the council office.
Lisa Leder, Council Attorney.
And Sophia McDowell, the Chief Deputy Clerk is here, she just stepped out for a minute. Um, so, uh, committee members, does this agenda look good? Any suggestions, provisions? Yeah, um, so let's launch right into old business. Um, we talked at our last meeting about uh, new options for signing in for public comment at meetings. Um, that Clerk Bolden had brought forward some suggestions, so toss it to Clerk Bolden. We might talk further about. You know, the iPad sign in or.
Okay, so today will be a bit of show and tell, so you all know when I refer to an iPad as this, um, very, very heavy machine. It probably wouldn't be that heavy, but the case itself is heavy. We could either put it on a stand or put it on the table close to the clerk's office so that they could actually be there and have somebody to touch base with without crowding up around the staff table on the other side of the room. Um. So, there's that for signing up at least. I thought it would be helpful if you had a list of people who are signing in and I'll show you in just a moment. Um, similar to what we did during the U D O and sometimes occasionally during COVID when there were several speakers. The presiding officer could say, okay, next step, we have Speaker Smith, Speaker Chibodez, Speaker, um, Yang. So they could just go through the one, two, three, and they know that they're going to be up next for speaking. Um, sorry, um, I will share my screen so you can see a rough draft of what the form would look like for, um, people to share. Or to look at. I'm gonna have to give you a second to open that. Wow. Hey. No idea what all those numbers were, so forgive me for that. So this is a rough draft of what the form would look like. Um, I think this is actually the form view, so we come, we cannot find it. Here we go. This is what somebody would see when they log into the form, which would just be form, their first name and their next name, so. With your permission, Councilmember Zulik?
Yes.
It would happen their name. Next, is the item. What would you prefer, Councilmember Zulik?
No.
Next, brief description of what you would like to discuss. Brief, one word would be fine.
No.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, time for the summary.
And that would be the end of it.
We're gonna do the max characters on the brief.
Yeah.
Not a bad idea.
There, there.
I have thirty.
Okay.
Okay, I, I would worry about that. As far as you think. What the presiding officer would see would then be.
That don't face.
I wonder who the votes.
Yeah.
I bet. I'd see that.
That was Mr. Test. I, I don't know why Waller's Christ he votes for monkeys, sir, we just, the test of that. Um, so. I feel a little seen. We did some other tests earlier, um, and I actually deleted those out this morning because I, um, wanted to do a cleaner on the last portion of it. So this is kind of how it would be set up. Very simple. You can filter so that if you want to see just, um, those that say yes, presiding officer can see, that's the only person who wants to do it on items on the agenda. So there are multiple ways to filter the data. Um, and the reason I've said it was in rough form was because I wanted to make sure that you all also knew the language on the form is very changeable. We may not like the way it looks from now, because it, you know, it's very drab ones, all right, I'm starting to leave you in that, so it can be cleaned up. And I do think we should add links at the top to the rules for public comment that you see.
Can we have, uh, I'm sorry, do you mind if I?
I, yeah, there, yeah, there are more comments and questions, I'll probably add some notes.
Um, should we have, are you participating in this meeting via Zoom or in person on there so that we know when the chair calls on people that they are on Zoom or in person?
I think it creates another friction point for getting people's names. And we'll know in the room, and that's part of what we're tracking anyway through the clerk's office, so that's a I don't know.
Is this for in the room only, like it's a, okay.
Both. So it'll be available with a QR code that can be displayed prior to the meeting and also a link that can be dropped in the chat by council staff while they're administering the meeting.
How early can they submit? Uh, what are the timeframes for being able to access this to submit the form for public comment?
I would recommend that you not open in pub before, unless you're doing some other form of public comment that you're accepting for, um, comments to be submitted to the council, which I think through all the researching and looking at. I would recommend that the suggestion for public comment during the meeting, which means opens when the meeting opens and closes when the meeting closes. Uh, for this, because it's tracking public comments made during the meeting.
Which is the same thing with paper.
Basically, the paper, because I don't put the paper out four hours ahead of time and I don't leave it out four hours afterward.
No, I agree.
Actually, I should have left it out four hours afterward. I left it overnight, but most people can't get into City Hall to actually access a paper.
What do, um, other committee members think about the Zoom question?
Just kind of envision if I'm chairing a meeting. And I would, and I I would recommend to whoever's chairing to not say Mister or Misses, Biz, or whatever, just just say first and last name. Next person is Sydney Zulik.
Right.
Then, if I don't know the person, I may not know whether they're there. Whether I need to look at the staff desk and say, unmute that person, you know?
Hmm.
Um, some names are gender neutral, you know, so.
Yep.
It's your guessing.
They're unexpected. Like sometimes what you might assume will be different.
Um, in terms of just like a, yeah, quick checkbox at the end of the form, it's like, are you making your comment? Via Zoom or in person? I think it's just a checkbox. Uh, probably be okay, or we could try it either way.
Okay.
Yeah, I think for speed and efficiency administration, that'd be helpful.
Is it contemplated that whoever's presiding at the meeting then would read this, this list when it comes to the public comment portion of the meeting and say you know, would Sydney Zulik come forward, present comment, or is this purely for the, uh, for clerk's records to keep track of names? The way I contemplated it, which may be different than the council members themselves, was that council members would at the beginning of the meeting say, you know, for public comment. Rather than having people sign in, a link to a form would be provided. Once you sign in, the presiding officer will call your name in the correct order. So you have, um, I couldn't away from the, because I put that. When you actually are looking at it, you'll have a list of everybody who signed up, so you will know by timestamp what the correct order is. And then you will be able to determine who goes when. That's rough.
That makes sense. Um.
Would you give that? So ideally, the presiding officer would say, um, right, it was on the agenda, you'd have to keep track of those people and put those in order, it's all filtered out, and then you could queue people up. So it would be Isabel, it's your turn, you have three minutes of the O M S, not following Sydney yet. And then that way can get things kind of a little bit more organized.
Okay, so not just say now it's, uh, Sydney Zulik, please give your comment. He would also say and after Sydney Zulik, we will have Matt Flaherty. So.
Matt's first, Kim, yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, and then I, I, we were talking about it in the office and, um, so these memories that we did it during U D O discussions, I thought we did it during the um, fully remote days of council, but we did queue people in threes when there was a long list of people, so it's not unfamiliar to members of the public who, like, have ten meetings, the sense of, okay, next step, we're meeting ten person A, person B, and person C. And after that, next step, one person delete me that. And one person C and.
And then. If you can alternate between in-person and Zoom, however the chair chooses.
We should, I didn't even say alternate one time in person or Zoom, because you can have the timestamp with the sign, and then you'll just know who's next.
Yeah.
You wouldn't actually have to worry about that. You could just go.
Did we see the, um, the, uh, special shares view again?
Yes.
It is live too, so in the moment, if people were signing up, um, with the QR code, let's say, from their seat. It will just be five hundred one.
That's great.
Now, um, not entirely sure what I did with the sharing, so you'll have to do it just a moment because. I'm struggling.
While you're looking for that, um, Clerk Bolden, did you say that your office actually has two iPads that could be made available?
Yes.
Great. Sorry, I just forgot.
And we would do things like, uh, do not block screen. So there's nothing, and not access, like the privacy will be protected, so they can't access things. And then the screen won't go away, they're watching, it's the last call rate.
Wait, what?
We won't, but we can put it on never.
Yeah.
All of those, the little worky type things we can work out too.
Do we envision, uh, are cooks required to fill this out? Like if we get to the end of the list, but there's somebody saying, oh, I want to comment, and they walk up. We have to fill this out like after their comment? Obviously, we still keep a record, a lot of people are active, but. What's the?
I'd say we have a paper option too, but I don't know.
We can't, we can't, I mean, we can't make someone on Zoom fill it out. We can kind of pull someone to account in their room to make sure he fills out, but.
Yeah, I don't think we should deny anybody the opportunity to speak.
Right.
They did.
Request to take that thing.
Yeah, I mean, they may not be moved to speak until they've heard something else, yeah. So we have to get them that, that chance.
With the benefit of doing it with QR code, and like you said, a lot of people can sit at their table or at their chair and just fill it out on their phone, knocking the roof, and they don't look subtle, and they may come up and have to type in, so. That may be the added benefit if somebody says something outlandish that they want to respond to or making their statement. That's true, which we've seen.
Yeah.
Hmm. I think this will cut down on the line too, which, which was problematic.
Yes.
Where would the QR code be? How would you want to find that, the QR code? Um, I would suggest you dropping it on the screen, you know how there's usually a timer as a person or something like that for a while, just maybe the timer with the QR code or something like that. Or you just set it up on the screen. Or we could, I don't know, you put it multiple places.
That's why we can contact I T S if we have some suggestions.
Yeah, that.
You could even have print it out on the door next to the agenda.
Hmm. Okay, this is an option. Falling in the realm of the easiest, cheapest options. So it's super cheap.
Thank you.
That is what I have.
Yeah.
Um, but if you want to play with the language, please let me know. We can do that. I don't want you to, uh, yeah, not be putting anything that follows. That's for the committee. And I will stop.
Somebody already added commenting via Zoom.
Oh, I think I did that.
Okay.
Stop me, so excited if I forget.
Or we can put that at the end, so it doesn't sound like a, you know. You're gonna be trained differently if you click one or the other.
Fair enough. So.
You're done?
Yay.
Good. Thank you for doing one. Of course.
Yeah. Um, so committee members, are there any concerns, questions, comments?
I think it'll make it a lot easier from the standpoint of, um, documentation.
Hmm.
And it'll feel more organized, I think. In the heat of the moment.
Yeah. Um.
I mean, we'll learn stuff from, like, it's like the kind of thing that can, like, easily be iterated on, like, if, like, one part's working well, and one part's not, which I guess, but I think that's moving forward.
I do have a question.
Yeah.
Um, when we were talking about this, we were mostly talking about regular council meetings and, um, somewhere in the last hour or so, the question was raised about deliberative sessions, and I said I imagine it'd be roughly the same, but I really don't. So that is just something to, um, drop there, and part of it depends on what type of deliberative session you are having, because if it's a one of the big ones, the breakout rooms where people are coming in and out, that might be more difficult. Um, there's no guarantee that they'll be speaking in the same way, and they wouldn't be tracking attendance in the same way, but, um, I didn't want to flag that, I will, while you're having sessions.
Do we noted? Well, maybe we can just start with the sessions and then see how that goes and implement it. Um, as the format allows deliberation sessions.
Hmm.
Um, so I think we would need a motion to make this recommendation to the full council.
I'm moved to recommend these silent forms, such to the full cast.
Second. For regular sessions.
For regular sessions. Dismitted.
Right, moved and seconded, um. And it's member Flaherty.
Yes.
It's member Zulik.
Yes.
It's member Daly.
Yes.
I will vote yes. Well, thanks to Clerk Bolden and the deputy clerks for helping with this.
Um. You're recommending it to the full council on this Wednesday?
Um. Uh, Lisa, do you see any problem with that after our committee reports?
You know, I hesitate to say anything without hoping, um, we have a lot coming before council this next week, so she might have a specific opinion about that, between the tax abatements, the zoning matters. Um. I think that will be potentially quite a bit.
Yeah, maybe we should wait also to, so I have a chance to put a memo on the packet to describe. Maybe with your help.
Okay.
You could also, like, bring it up in council on Wednesday and just give people a heads up that this is what we're up to.
Right, and then bring it to the next round.
Yeah.
Hmm.
That'll give them the opportunity to do the public comment on it.
Yeah, there we go. All right, so the next part of old business, um, also related to getting more public input in different ways was, um, there were ideas for alternative public feedback mechanisms on legislation. Um, and I think, uh, Sydney and Courtney, you had volunteered to look into it further, I don't know.
Yeah.
If you've had a chance to.
I, yes, we put together, it was last minute, so I apologize, I didn't get it in time to everybody to get in the packet or an addendum, but I emailed it out um, to all of you, um, just shortly ago, just a Google Doc where we put together, what, written comment guidelines.
Can we display it?
Maybe, I was gonna say, is anybody able to display it possibly? I, whoever has screen sharing, just. I want to say. Oh, do you want? We'll send it to the clerk's email in general. Should I send it somewhere else?
I think you can share your screen.
Unless, yeah, um, your cover. Oh, you're not in there.
Oh, yeah, you're not.
Let me see.
All right, then, um, hold on. All right.
I'm sure.
Someone's at the top of your email.
Hmm?
I'll share it again, so it's at the top of your email. Um, it's actually getting my email. I just closed it and saved it.
Shower to be at the top of the email.
So I have many emails again, I guess.
Do you want me to join the meeting, so I can?
I've got it, uh, now, I'm waiting, sorry for that delay.
Hmm. Sorry, I didn't get it out soon.
Okay. There we go, yes, that's it.
So this was some research into, um, well, first of all, just submitting some suggestions for how we might want to go back to the public comment, and then some examples from around the country for how other localities have done it. So, um, the idea of doing written comment or providing the avenue for written comment. Um, you know, is not in place of verbal comment, this is in lieu, uh, or not in lieu. In tandem with, uh, just to provide another avenue and also an opportunity for things to be part of the public record. Uh, so, we would need to set specific deadlines for when they can get their comments in. If they want it part of the packet that's to be distributed each Friday, we would have to determine when we would want to do that. Um, or if they're going to be in, you know, if we're not planning on publishing them in the packet, do we want to just put them in the minutes? For the. Um, we need to ensure that every council member gets copies directly to them as well, to make sure that we are having easy access to them, making sure that, well, I guess, actually, it's in the packet ahead of time. It doesn't need to be emailed, uh, but we need to provide multiple opportunities for where they can access this, all right, so they can either email directly their public comments saying they want it to be public comment, or we can have another online form that they can access right from our, our webpage. Um, so we would need to decide the specifics for what we would allow, what we want, right? We want their name, we want, if nothing else, part of their zip code. Um, just to determine residency. Uh, word limit, I would suggest four hundred and fifty words, because that would be roughly equivalent to three minutes worth of speaking time. But, um, as you can see, San Diego only allows two hundred words. Um, and then we can have them indicate whether this is, just like with the sign-in sheet, is this an item on the agenda or an item not on the agenda? Um, Sydney, anything else you had to add about?
It's with, if we were to accept written comments, like, prior to the packet, we would need to have, uh, an agenda go out sooner, because people would have no way of knowing what was going to be in the packet.
Good point.
Um, so that's, that's my only, it's the only thing I was thinking about, but.
Or we could.
We also don't have to do that.
Publish them on, on, you know, have them linked either in a PDF form or right on the website somewhere, so that other members of the public can easily find them. And then if we wanted to do that, again, that, that would be a pretty question of, I create too much last minute work, but if we wanted to say, hey, you can get your public comments submitted by noon on Wednesday or two o'clock on Wednesday, and then they'll be up on the website for anybody to see. Uh, just another way of making sure that people have more time to get their comments in on whatever's happening that evening. Obviously, if they're not related to the agenda, right, if these are general public comments that we do at our beginning and end sessions, it might not matter. Might not be a time sensitive issue for which packet they're reading, so we would need to, um, think about which is doable, really. I guess the logistics is really the biggest question here. My inclination was to say publish them in a packet, but Sydney brings up a good point that that might be logistically difficult. Might be too early to be collecting the public comment. But I don't know about a website that might be putting a lot of work on somebody else to get those posted in a timely manner. Any thoughts or questions?
Thank you. I think, uh, first reflection is that, like, this is, um, an evolution maybe in a sort of more ad hoc existing practice, which is, uh, people can, of course, submit comments via email uh, to the council office, and we generally forward those to council members, like, we, we already do receive written comments, but this helps, um, provide like a more formal structure for that and let folks know that that's an option, which might everybody might not think of.
And I think, oh, can I just, I'm sorry, I, I think right, this goes to what I was saying, it's part of the public record, then it's not just going to our eyes only, if they want.
Hmm.
You know, the rest of the city to see, or if they want to make sure their publics, their comments are publicly digested.
Hmm. My concern with that is, um, uh, well, a couple considerations. One is like, um, if we're publishing in a, like, just sort of like the, are, are we advantaging one form of, uh, comment over another, so to speak, versus like attending in person versus writing? Uh, when someone's making an in-person comment, um, there are rules that are, you know, better, for better or worse, you know, attempted to be, um, implemented in real time by the departmentarian, by the chair, or anything, the chair. Uh, that seems like a, like, we'd have to have something like that to, uh, make sure it's not you know, egregious violations of castle rules or, uh, uh, you know, whatever it is, uh, for publishing written comments, so that strikes me as like, uh, probably involves some different line drawing and administrative burden, uh, so I'm definitely a little hesitant about the notion of publishing written comments, though. Um, I like the idea of formalizing the process of how to submit written comments. That's my, go, we actually, I guess, are the show impressions, yeah.
Thank you.
Hmm.
I'm trying to problem solve, you know, I see some, just purely from, like, a staff perspective. Um, potential issues to, um, like, resolve. Um, such as maybe the time in making the comments accessible. Um. Beginning April twenty twenty six are going to be new accessibility goals that are being much more stringent than what we're complying with now. Um, so I'm trying to think of, um, compliance with that going forward. Um, so we'd need to receive the comments. I'm assuming this would come through council staff. And then, um, make, make the text accessible. Um. And I can see where this would also include maybe some staff time in maybe reviewing what the content is a little bit, um. Monitoring a website and email to make sure that we're capturing, um, the comments, and then, um, if they're prepared in the packet, then including those in, in the packet as, as well. So it's not to say that this couldn't be done, we'd simply need to, like, address those, those issues on the part of it with the staff time. I think, I, I think your point is well taken about, it might require that the packet be released earlier. Um, I don't know how that might impact. uh the legal department and other areas which are trying to get um legislation and documents to us for the packet release date, but that's that's something that comes to mind.
Um, for clarification, I wasn't even suggesting that the packet be released sooner, but I was more saying like it's not feasible the current way that it's being done to accept public comment when packet has been.
Sure, yeah, yeah.
And I don't even know that this is really a good option for us. This is just if we wanted to consider going down this path. These would be the suggestions and best practices that you were able to give out.
No, thank you. This, I mean, this is really good starting point to think through it, so I appreciate your. For sorry, were you finished?
Are are there, maybe we could like accomplish the same thing? What are the important goals that you'd like to address from this?
One of the most important things that I see about providing this option is that not everybody's comfortable speaking public or speaking in front of other people.
They're available at six thirty on Friday.
Or available, and they may want their words to to go public, right? Not just to our ears, but to make sure that their fellow residents have access to what they're trying to say. Uh, so I think it's just another accessibility avenue.
Yeah, I can see totally why that would be important.
Well, as far as what um Matt was saying, and I agree that, you know, we have rules for public comment that we can try to enforce when they're in person or on Zoom. Um, we could uh certainly have those rules as part of any form that somebody submits um for written comments. And, you know, have a checkbox, like you have to have read and agree to these rules. Otherwise, we will not make comments public.
Exactly. So you break in these rules, you know, not be publishing your comment. So I think that's common sense. I think that would be fair.
Might run into some free speech issues.
Well, plus for public comment. I mean, the the ones that we use in person are the same ones we should use here, and we carefully craft our ones for in person to just say, I mean, I don't remember exactly what it says, but they're certainly within the free speech guidelines.
Yeah, I think that the existing rules are are solid in terms of of currently.
Now, if we just have an email address, there's really no way to do that unless we have an an auto reply that says thank you for your comment. These are our rules for public comment. If the comment that you have submitted does not appear to these rules, it will not be in public. So, I mean, it could be like a separate email address, maybe to keep it out of the council at Bloomington email address. It could be you know, so that then you could have an auto reply.
Nice good question. Of course. Um, so you were looking at some of these other cities that aren't in Indiana. But for any of them, do they have any um security measures in place so that they don't get um I don't know the word for it, if you get like a bunch of bots that are submitting forms or something like that.
I don't know. That's a very good question. I didn't see anything that that acknowledged that.
Need to prove your human box.
I clicked into a couple of the forums, but not all of them. So I didn't kind of cross anything, see any reference to anything like that. Good question.
That was just one of the things I was looking at for the public comment forums, and then I took those. But would would it be helpful if if um we we met, you the two of you met with staff, because there probably are ways to work around a lot of the issues that I just raised. Um, including like creating an accessible template for the public comments. Things of that nature. I mean, that could be next step.
I mean, is this something that everyone wants to pursue? Because it's like we were really just doing research to be able to present you some options.
Yeah, I mean, if we want to move forward, sure. Not if there's no appetite for this, I guess.
I would I would uh favor at least a a minimum step forward of like clarifying that anybody can submit a comment via writing. Uh, having a defined process and timeline for that, some rules around, yeah, reverse public comment, uh length of a post, et cetera. And have that uh go to council members to be collected in some form. I think where where we start to run into difficulty around administrative burden uh and and other questions is like when when we start talking about publishing or like reading aloud, that like those kind of things strike me as like needing more conversation and consideration to get ready, but um I think I think it'd be a positive step to have a slightly more formalized process than just emailing the council office. So that's important.
I think another piece of clarity that would help me is when you say to be included in the record, what does that specifically mean and that to be written during council or published? Because currently, that's not council practice.
Yeah, so there would be. Including it in the record is, that's the question. You know, um, I don't necessarily support actually reading them during. Uh, some some of these cities do read them during their council meetings. I would not be in favor of that, but I mean, we could put that on the table if people wanted to talk about.
Because the the right now, I think the way that there would be a disparity between the way written comments are treated versus in-person comments. Um, if they're to be like posted on the website or something, that that there would be that disparity between those two types of uh public comments. So like, for example, when you get email that doesn't get put anywhere, right? It's just kind of for your eyes only, so the goal is to try and make public comment to be larger community. So that would be a very cumbersome thing for IT. They'd have to design a whole thing through onboard. Jen, you probably know what I'm talking about in terms of that logistics or infrastructure rather. We just did a whole big thing with onboard, and so that's kind of where I'm coming at it.
So what does, I'm sorry, I don't understand how onboard factors.
Well, I'm thinking that would be what probably the ITS is going to recommend to you all as the only option to publish these written comments if they are to be published for the larger community.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry, I said that very. Let me clarify, minutes are supposed to be a record of what the council does, not what the council says, and then for members of the public, while we certainly capture their names and they spoke about goats. We're not going to capture the fact that somebody like, say, Nicole Bolden got up and spoke at length about the benefits of various types of goats. And her personal preference for painting goats because they make her giggle, but she also recognizes when they fall over, it makes them, and on and on and on. I could go on for hours. You all know that, right? So that's not going in the minutes. If with bare bones, Nicole Bolden spoke about goats.
And Roberts is discourages.
And Roberts discourages actually even capturing everything you all say as well, which.
And it's not really a record
Right.
of the meeting, if it doesn't happen in the meeting.
It becomes a platform for members of the public who can inhibit council action.
It's meant to be a sorry. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm going to change the conversation. Sorry. But from a large perspective, that wouldn't naturally be included in the minutes.
And should I keep sharing this or keep it going?
Um, so I guess we should um make some kind of decision, have it default. So uh following up with what Matt was saying, so did I understand correctly now that you were, you met? Um, let's start with clarifying that constituents can all submit comments, council via email. And council will read them.
No. I'm much more shy about the, oh, oh, council will read them out loud at a meeting or council will read them as in like, that's part of the job, yes. Yes, yes, we receive them, uh, and read them. I I I meant to step further than that, of not just letting people know that they can email us, but actually having a forum for submission, so channeling it that way.
Make it feel more official.
Yeah, and again, some people feel people know they can email us or just look it up, look it up to or whatever, you know what I mean? Like I feel empowered to do so. May not, instead of just clarifying that this is an option and like getting it out of the option into a submission form uh that has some guidance, uh, I guess around I I don't know, there's a there's a con to that too. It's like a slightly different thing, right? If we're controlling like the length of a host, uh, it's a different, emails have attachments. Sometimes people send us like you know, four pages of text, then a bunch of hyperlinks and attachments. Uh, and maybe we want that too. I don't, I think, you know. So I don't know, I guess I was i- i- in favor of uh sort of democratizing written comments a little bit more than just people's own initiative to email us by by naming and having a process, and so I I support that, I guess. I I don't.
We also could like start a part of the program with just a forum to receive comments that just council members read, and if somehow they're was another solution other than onward, we could move forward with that solution instead, like to make it something that could actually be readable for the public.
Well, one, because in one of the cities, it was Walnut Creek, California, they post their public comments via PDF. Like, I don't know if this could be like a an an addendum to the packet. Like afterwards, like when we're where we post our packets on the website and then have this link with like the PDF of the public comments. And that's doable. And easy, I don't know if it's easy, you know? That's the other thing too. I don't think we want to create like a really heavy lift for very little payoff. If nobody's going to utilize it or the public's not paying attention to it.
So how would the um, we did a forum. How would council members receive the information for?
If you use Google phone, you can forward it to your city emails.
And would that be? The benefit would be that I don't see the difference, I guess, I guess, okay, well, I do. Um, I don't know if it's worth it, but like Matt was saying, the one benefit may be that it would limit the length of the comment, but the form could just say, you know, limit five hundred words or whatever. Um, and it could kind of confirm, it could potentially confirm their address, their district. But we're still, I mean, we still have the email option. We will always have the email option because that's you know, just public service.
Or snail mail. I mean, just as an example, uh, received a a letter to council member Kim Scott Smith. So um we do, we do. I've been seeing emails. Snail mail.
So I guess I I'm since we already have a variety of ways. I'm wondering what the benefits. I mean, I understand the benefit if we're going to go through the effort of making it public. Right. But if we're not, I don't really see what the benefits.
Yeah, it's just an option. Um, I think Courtney and I were both kind of like, let's do the research and figure out what other cities do, but we're not super attached to it.
Yeah, I think the almost like the main value to me, at least in like a light touch version of this, is people just might not think of reaching out to us in forums other than public comment during a meeting, because that's kind of what's most visible. Instead of just like on the city council like homepage even or something, right? Like just having a a widget of some kind or link, I don't know, for uh submitting written comments to the council. It might again help more people understand that that is an option if they haven't thought of it. That's kind of it. I mean, we could even literally just say like you can email comments to the council at this address. Could be that simple. Maybe that doesn't go as far as you all would like to go. I mean, I get that we're talking about ranges of options.
I mean, has anybody had feedback from anybody in the public saying, oh, I really want to make public comment, but I can't. I mean, is this an issue that, are we trying to solve a problem that doesn't exist? I mean, I do want to make sure we're providing more accessibility for people, but if they can email us and that has historically been good, is there an appetite for people making public comment?
I have heard from people that they're frustrated that they're not available at six thirty.
Fair, okay.
Yeah, there there have been instances during meetings, during the chat, where we've received written comments with the request to to read them. Um, for for certain reasons. Um, it doesn't address what Councilmember Zulik was talking about. These were people who were present in the meeting, but for um any number of reasons weren't able to to liberalize or perhaps make the comment, so we've read those comments if we were during the meeting. They've been fairly limited now. They haven't been lines and lines of text.
But that's a precedent. So somebody potentially could misuse that. And have you read something that is hateful or?
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I al- I mean, but I also, I mean, I know one of the constituents who frequently sends a written comment. And I think it's because he can usually write them, speak, and so we don't want to mitigate that kind of input. So it's a number. Well, I think uh we could just, I mean, informally just ask an, or a council president to announce every time that, you know, you're welcome to email the council office on anything. And that'll come to all council members. And then maybe put a pin in the other items until we're fully stacked at the council office and maybe January revisit. That's fine. What do you think?
Yeah, and then at that point maybe you and I can meet with them to, at least as suggested, to explore what that could look like.
Do we need a kind of vote on this? Thank you. Okay, um so the other three items under old business are pretty much just reviewing where we are. So we had talked about the proposal for planning and scheduling deliberation sessions, and there were concerns um uh about um using a Google Doc to submit suggestions because it may violate open door law if several people are in a Google Doc to submit suggestions, because it may violate open door law if several people are in a Google Doc or exchanging information in that way. So I don't know, um, Lisa, if you have anything else to say about that at this point, or what, where do we stand with that?
In, in preparation for today's meeting, I went back and looked at a prior PAC opinion, which stated that shared online document editing is contrary to the legislative intent. That liberation and other official actions be conducted in a public meeting. And it's, and to set, set antithetical to the spirit of the open door law and some other things, the, the suggested suggested process by, by the PAC is to delegate an individual to draft or maintain a working document, and then have others contact that individual, so in this case, that could um, occur with, um, you know, Matt, for an example, as an example, as a coun- council member who's agreed to maintain a list of potential topics, and then council members could contact Matt and add additional topics to that list. And then at periodic points, that list could be discussed here in the CCP meetings, or it could be presented to the council president. That could be one option in, in handling it.
I mean, I know the council president already has a lot on their plate, but it seems like having the middleman and just having the middle person, whatever. The liaison, uh, and just ha- having people send their topics and their ideas to the council president seems like the most logical. We can't do a Google Doc.
Yes, and that would be another option as well.
Even with this in Google's form, speaking about Google.
So then Google is responsible for populating all the development fields.
Exactly. We walk, they walk through it. And the form goes to the president. So, um, looking at the proposal again. Were there other, and I'm sorry, I didn't check my notes from the last time we talked about this, were there any other concerns about the language in the proposal? So any council members, or set of council members can propose a topic in appropriate format for deliberations session. They should consider the following questions, what is the purpose of the session? What is the format that best serves the purpose, and how will the public be engaged? And then, yeah, those are the two main questions, there are some headings under there. And then instead of the Google sheet, we could create a Google form with these headings, a topic, um, listed for date. You know, we have one month scheduled, often they're taken out by other things, but topic, preferred date, stage you are in, legislative process, if this is just idea gathering, or you already have an idea for legislation, et cetera. Type of meeting, whether it's developing legislation, um, discussion of legislation that's already written. Type of public engagement, whether it's open, you know, for public to have breakout groups, whether the public is just gonna give comments at the microphone, et cetera. Whether it's council members just sitting around a table, and then the physical format, and then do you need facilitators? And then, of course, the council member or council members who propose a session that is, uh, gonna require public engagement tools, then they have to help with it, they have to do the, you know, engage facilitators and such. And so I think one, one reason we kind of delayed action on this as well is because of the staff time that would be involved. If we have these kind of sessions, now, I don't know if there's a lot of staff time involved just to gather the input. Somebody has to make the form, but what do y'all think?
Would any of us connect the form? Yeah, I think the staff time involved in making the form is natural. Wouldn't be breaking up a bill as well, if a forum instead of going just to council president, went to all of the council members to see, I mean, we would have obviously a plan for then how it gets acted among them, you know, maybe the president would still take the scheduling lead, or, you know, decide whether or not that's gonna get scheduled. But just so other council members can see what's being proposed, and say, oh, I wanna help you with that, or
You mean if it's view only?
Yeah, if it's view only, I mean, it's, yeah, because it's just the results of the forum that we would be seeing, not that we're commenting about.
I had a similar idea, and I was wondering if the, the meeting schedule that is maintained. If it could be a section added to that for these deliberation sessions, and have maybe a, a list of those on it.
I'm sorry, a list of standard meeting?
Potential topics. And maybe that could be distributed periodically to council members as well.
So, I'm sorry, I think I missed half a sentence.
The, uh, the, the meeting schedule with the, uh, the dates of regular sessions and deliberation sessions. Uh, I think in the past periodically, that has been distributed to
So the legislative schedule?
Exactly.
Okay, not just the council calendar?
No, no, not, no. But add maybe a sheet with respect to, to topics, because council president, um, maintains um, that, that schedule, and if topics and forms are being sent to the president for this purpose, maybe that schedule could be updated to include those topics as well.
So, um, when somebody fills out the Google form, you're thinking there would be a link to the legislative schedule as well?
The, the form would be received by the president, and then the president could add a particular topic.
Oh, okay, because that legislative schedule, a version of it is already shared with the whole else.
I think at times, the president
She has a version that's more streamlined, that's yes, shared with us. Okay. So that could be the way that the input from the Google form is shared with everybody, the president adds it to the legislative schedule.
Yes. I think it makes sense for council members to periodically see um, what legislation, um, is scheduled going, going forward. I mean, that changes frequently, but at least I, I think it would be helpful for you to, to see that.
The, um, upcoming schedule that I have access to hasn't been updated since April.
Yeah, that's the thing, it would have to be kept up to date. So, um, Lisa, do you see a public records, uh, uh, open door law problem with what Courtney was suggesting, that the Google form, that all, that when a colleague submits a Google form about a deliberation session, that we can all see it? View only?
I need to go back and look at the different opinions, but I could see and so I hesitate to, to say anything with respect to that. Yeah, because official action has to find, and the Indiana code includes a receipt of information.
Well, um, uh, after, we have a meeting on July thirtieth, right, a regular session?
A council meeting?
Yeah, yeah, so I'm wondering, um, if in addition to bringing forward this, the sign in proposal, we could bring forward this proposal revised to just reflect, it'll be a Google form that goes only to the president, and then we can cross the bridge later as far as how the president shares that with others, or how it gets shared with others. Yeah, does that sound?
Figure out one step at a time.
Yeah, see if the council's even on board with, uh, because I, I think that, um, we might get some good feedback from the current council president. You know, before we spend any of our time on this. So, um, I would entertain a motion to revise the proposal to replace a Google form that goes along to the council president. Put that in instead of the shared Google Doc with all the same information. And then forward that proposal to the council for a discussion and possible approval on the service.
So, second.
You stepped out a minute, you understand?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, council member Daley?
Yes.
Council member Zulik?
Yes.
Council member Flaherty?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Deputy clerk Crossley, was that clear enough, I hope?
Yes, and if not, I can go back and watch.
Okay. The proposal for council member liaisons to boards and commissions, so that was adopted by council, and I think council members who like is still working with staff on
Yes.
How to formalize.
So I got, um, a sample from Lisa on what the legislation might look like, and I'm hoping to have that ready, at least the draft by our August meeting. And, um, Lisa, I probably will reach out to you for a minute before that at some point, but not sure what stage I'll be in yet. It'll be like a draft for you to review, so that we can go into the meeting prepared.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Uh, and then the Title II overhaul, um, initiated by council member Asara, and the accompanying administrative manual. I can report that, um, clerk Golden, attorney Later, attorney Ripken, and I, uh, all had a meeting about, um, starting to just go paragraph by paragraph through Title II, and looking at the, the changes that were recommended, and I was kind of thinking through it, but going paragraph by paragraph, of course, takes a while, that was a two hour meeting, yeah.
Yeah, so we probably To, to add maybe some context that might be helpful to council members, um, what's been proposed is actually um, amending, uh, these portions of Title II, and then also creating um, a new document of rules of procedures that would, um, then, uh, incorporate tax that's maybe been edited out of Title II in, into these, these rules. So it's actually potentially creating two different documents, a new Title II, and then, um, new rules.
Is, the administrative meeting will exist yet, because I've heard it doesn't?
Yeah.
What, is this an administrative manual for, for council members, or?
Okay.
Yeah, that's what's envisioned.
I, I would say the council office, including council members, right? Like, things that extend beyond council members alone?
Yeah, right, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, how council does its work, which of course includes council staff and works.
Staff has been preparing processes and procedures internally to, to use. And that's in, uh, a series of electronic files and folders, but it isn't a, a manual per se.
Thank you. And I wanna correct, I said Yang, I meant Chen. Chen Chongrui was part of the meeting, thank you for that. So we will have another one of those, and we'll kind of plan through. I think none of us thought it was like urgent to get this done for the playgrounds, it was more important to get it done, right?
It's really important work, because it really gets to the heart of what council does, and it affects the clerk's office, potentially affects other departments within the city.
I'm sorry, I, since we're still on old business, I just wanted to update the committee up.
Yeah, please.
Uh, it's breaking news, uh, but remember old business, old of old from, um, the council or the meeting from last year, uh, that we were working on, the code of conduct, and I have submitted the code of conduct to legal, and so Anna from legal just said, you know, um, to look at it, and she has some things that she wanted to go over with me, so hopefully, um, I can bring that back to this committee next month for review. So, that's something that I just wanted to, uh, it's been a project of mine that I've been trying to work on for a little bit, and finally got some headway, some movement, so it's going.
Thank you, great, thanks for the update, yeah, so that's for boarding commission, yes, yeah. Excellent. Okay, so new business, um, this was brought to me by Deputy Mayor Gretchen Matt. They want to revisit possibly merging the Environmental Commission and the Commission of Sustainability. Um, and one of the reasons is because that she cited was, um, uh, consistent vacancies on both, having trouble filling both commissions. So she said, um, another thing that we could consider is just reducing the number of members of each commission, that might help with that problem. I know, so, I mean, this would just be our first discussion of the CBR. You know, I think we would wanna reach out to those commissions as well, before any major steps were taken. Um, so in the packet, I have the descriptions of each of the commission's purposes as newly revised earlier this year. So I'm just interested in getting feedback.
Couple questions. Has the administration talked to the commissions at all yet, since they're proposing this?
I don't think so.
Okay, just one other question was just, um, in, in my experience, uh, in in my experience, uh both the environmental commission and sustainability commission have it of course go there, you know, end of flow, kind of there are some downs like any commission, but uh have generally been like well engaged and no shortage of people like wanting to serve on those commissions, like it's a little bit, like I'd be curious to ground the feedback or the perception that they're having a hard time filling seats relative to other commissions and boards um. Like it I I that just strikes me as a little surprising, so I'd like to see the data, I guess, on it as the cited, you know, rationale justification. Uh so we did consider this question, of course, previously
Yeah.
uh and then decide, you know, not to pursue that particular recommendation from the the NOVAC organizational assessment of all the boards and commissions um. So yeah, that's the only rationale, just I'm curious to see a grounded data that also looks at other boards and commissions and like tries to dig into the question a little bit more before taking action on it.
Mm hmm. Yeah, let me uh read you what she sent me um. So this is from the deputy mayor, having been at the city eighteen months now, I wondered if there was an appetite to revisit the merging of these two commissions. These two commissions are both really big, they're twenty six members total. I assume it's thirteen and thirteen, I'm not sure. Um and there are almost never enough viable applicants to keep them filled. I also think the differences between them are confusing to the public and even internally. Finally, there is a perception that B cost is the more powerful commission, which leads to a disappointing resident experience on the EC. One unified commission makes sense to me, and at least one of the staff liaisons has raised that idea. But even if we want to keep them as separate commissions, would there be support for making each smaller while keeping the ratio of appointments the same, mayor, council? If they each had six to eight members, that would really reduce the recruiting left and get them closer to the actual membership we maintain.
So the environmental commission has twelve members, currently has three vacancies. And uh Commission on Sustainability has fourteen seats and two vacancies.
But both have like quite a few applicants.
So I'm sorry that UC has twelve members and how many vacancies?
Three.
And B cost has fourteen members and two?
Yes. Yeah, but it's not doesn't sound detrimental to me.
Not too bad.
Because also has, or yeah, has about eight applicants. So.
How many applicants does the EC have?
Three.
It's surprising. So.
And they've all been created um after May first.
What do you mean?
Like they're all viable, they're all viable applications, so then votes, gotcha.
That would be. Okay, so we need to see the data that she's referring to as her vacancies.
Like, in respect to subject matter, the overlap, like I wonder about, we could, we've kind of been down the street and talked about it all, I I agree that like the the lay of the understanding of sustainability, many people's minds might simply go to environmental. The notion has always been that this is intersectional with social and economic issues. Also, more recently, the commission has kind of like emerged as like uh the lead entity responsible for assisting in implementation of the climate action plan and um really good measures, but just different, I mean, like I want to about renaming it to like something like the Commission on Environmental Quality, which is like the origin of that, maybe that doesn't.
We just changed it to take that away.
Oh, was that what it's called? Oh, yeah. Oh, that's funny. That's funny, we never colloquially referred to that, yeah, um. It was more apt in a sense. Um. I don't know. I mean, I guess.
They do very different things.
Right.
Yeah.
So to some degree, it's like, that sounds like a communications challenge, not a merge of the commissions challenge, it's like, maybe it's names, maybe it's their, you know, onboard or wherever else their pages are, you know, describing what they do more clearly. Maybe it's improvements in the application system, which we've talked about, like for instance, limiting the number of applications. People can, you know, number of commissions people can submit applications for.
Um.
Other things, I guess, yeah. Gi- given how strongly most people on both of those commissions felt about the prospect of merging as well, I think like sure, the administration wants to reconsider this question again, like by all means they can, I I guess my advice would be they should do that in consultation and you know, collaboration with the commissions. Then we.
So um a couple of things here that I wanted to uh add to the conversation is um one, and looking at the applications, I think there has been um a matter of quality of the quantity um in terms of getting qualified applicants, because in talking to the liaison, I think they see like a number of applicants, but they don't really dive deep. This particular liaison um for like the environmental commission, for example, is very vocal and very hands on with things and will refer patients to me um and will say, hey, that, you know, we recommend this, please, so council and council head are pointing. So I think that is also very concerned um in both cases for both Commission on Sustainability and Environmental Commission. Uh the only vacancies that are left are mayoral appointments.
Hmm.
Um so they are in the process of doing that, and then they have a new person that's trying to go through all of that. I just wanted to add that, but um having said that um in terms of, you know, trying to look at the combined of Commission on Sustainability and B cost and and the NOVAC report, just kind of crap from this particular meeting, it does state that one of the core things is um trying to combine both because, both B costs and commissions, or that is it, on environmental commission um have the same type of um goal, which is quality of life. And so that actually was something that was very specific. And that, and I just wanted to highlight that that is, you know, one of the other ones that they wanted to have us combine that we also did this year with the bicycle kids or pedestrian and whatnot, so we've already done that, but and referring back to the NOVAC report, it does state that, you know, somebody did say, or, you know, deputy mayor after they mentioned that it is confusing, and that report it does talk about how people have been confused by the two.
Well.
And gave that strong recommendation.
Thank you, that's good information.
Yes, thank you for that. Um. So is there any appetite for doing anything on our part to merge them, or do we just say if you want to merge them, then, you know, give us your proposal and talk to the commissions?
Yeah.
I mean, I don't really want to work on that, that's not something I'm interested in.
Right.
Yeah.
I agree.
Yes, and they can, if that's something they want to do, they can work on it.
Courtney, any thoughts?
Oh, yeah, I agree. I mean, we can look at the proposal and see what they're thinking. I don't have, I've decided to do it. I mean, counsel, not in person, but.
Mm hmm.
Good thing.
I mean, I don't.
Uh yeah, I'm just saying.
Okay. So um. So it sounds like the consensus is that if the administration wants to move ahead, they should consult with the commissions and then uh put together a proposal, you know, based on solid rationale that we will then consider.
Yes.
Good?
Okay.
Right, or a public comment, is there any member of the public who would like to comment, any of the things we've talked about today, or any other related uh things related to the processes of the common council? Laura Holden?
I would like to talk about goodness, I'm sorry.
Yes.
I I did want to um ask if if there was language in your rules for public comment that I forgot to ask you all about, because it refers to citizens throughout. And wanted to know if we could go ahead and change that to residents for Brittany in front of the council for them.
I would love that, and not constituents either, except also, I guess, something I shouldn't or rather should be used very specifically.
So that that was it, but um and there's your name, so.
Okay, thank you for that, I've been thinking of that too. Uh Mr. Energy? Go ahead.
Good afternoon, council processes. I was hearing in and out of it, so I'll do the best I can, but my public comment on public comment is that anything that you do with it should be just sort of streamlining the process and not make it too complicated, you can see just by the discourse on this, you can get in the weeds very quickly. You need to have just a couple goals of what is in mind by having this sort of sign in process, which I think can work very well with an iPad. But we also have to remember that it's very, it's the levels of public discourse, it's kind of a little bit like social media, it's very easy to post something on social media, there's no real ramifications. Posting or giving council sort of the two hundred word or whatever it is um feedback is is much easier than going online, right, what I'm doing now, making public comment, you know what's even harder? Is going in person than in making public comments, so we have to, we have to sort of realize these discrepancies in it. So I would, it was talked about, or bandied, I should say, on sort of reading any public written comment, which I think is just a bad idea in general, just to get into that with what you read and don't read and anything like that. Um and just have a forum where you're seeing it, and if you want to make it open to the public, um great, I don't know if you want to add that to the minutes, I think complicates things as well, but just make sure you're streamlining and making it not burdensome and you're getting something out of it. So anything, it's a boarding commission, making sure it's furthering the council's work. Not just making it look like you're you're taking in input from the community or making things that just kind of um sort of look like just not real real input, but just kind of looking like you're getting that from the the public to make it look at, because you want to make sure you're more informed doing your job and not to make it more complicated for staff or make it more complicated for you and adding anything burdensome, that's why like streamlining commissions, I think, is always a good idea whenever you can. Thanks for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Anybody else like to make a comment? Right, I don't see any other hands raised, and there's nobody here in person. Um so um I'd like to follow up on what Clerk Golden said. Um this is something I've been meaning to do, so we do have uh let me pull it up here, our rules for making public comment on agenda and non-agenda items, that's linked on the council's website. And it says the Bloomington Common Council greatly values the voices of its citizens and welcomes public comment. So and then citizens is used at least two other times, and I would very much be in favor of changing that to residents. Um. I know that wasn't on the agenda today, I know, are we allowed to vote on that, even though it wasn't on the agenda?
I think so.
Okay. Okay, a second. Motion in a second? And what exactly is the motion? Um the motion, oh. No, it's where we do it, what exactly is the motion is all the things you just said.
I've heard it to update the language on rules for public comment.
Yes, from citizen to resident, yes.
And any other problematic language, like refers to constituent? Just like.
Yes.
It doesn't have the word constituent. It does have the word citizen.
Anything that refers to the people of Bloomington as anything that residents.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I I see it four times, it uses the word citizens, so those should be changed to residents.
It's a little so new, it was going to come back the other way.
Oh, make that motion. Council member Zulik?
Okay. And then.
Davy.
Okay.
Okay, so let's vote on that motion to bring that to the council. Um that would be July thirtieth as well, I think. Council member Flaherty?
Yes.
Council member Zulik?
Yes.
Council member Daley?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Yay. Thank you for that reminder, we'll bring that forward.
Do we have a ready going version of that? And uh okay, I only have my version. Can you have a version to go to the committee chair? So that doesn't need to be.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, anything else before we adjourn?
There is one other item, uh deputy Crossley pointed out that October thirteenth is Indigenous Peoples' Day.
Oh, right, for our council.
For do something.
Okay. Stay with.
There's two other meetings before then, but I should give much of it, but it's today.
Yeah, better sooner than later, I suppose.
I do have a hard stop for two minutes, it's because I have to go back to work. But if we can.
Find a way on the next meeting's agenda.
Should we just do it October twentieth instead?
At the same time.
Okay, same time.
We should be a bit of a.
Sure. I don't know. Does that work for the clerk's office?
Hmm.
I'll I'll be traveling back that day potentially from a organizational retreat, because it spans previous weekend weekend, so I'm a I'm a I'm a baby.
What about October sixth, the week before?
I maybe, maybe not, I don't know. Typically, I have meetings first Monday of every month, but I don't know if I was always too happy with that.
I am a little like that. I'm not, I'm not a hundred percent sure, I didn't finalize the details there for you yet, so I don't a hundred percent know my travel schedule, but it's a maybe.
Let's revisit this in August, all right, everybody. All right, we are adjourned.